of the Pacheco Stormwater District. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We will start with public comment. I believe Victor has something he'd like to read.
The Pacheco Stormwater District welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the trustees via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please say your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the trustees as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been muted. If you are participating in chambers, in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to the consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance of the chambers. Okay, there appears to be no public comment right now.
Okay, and there's no public comment in chambers either. So we will move along to the consent agenda. We have two items, the acknowledgement of certificate of posting and approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda, the acknowledgement of certificate of posting and the approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Now we will move on to the regular agenda. And the first item is a presentation by Carminder Brown of the San Benito Resource Conservation District. Carminder, welcome.
Well, good evening, trustees and county staff. Thank you for having me this evening to share some information with you about the San Benito Resource Conservation District. As you can see, our tagline is helping our community care for land, water, soil, wildlife, and natural resources. I want to start by telling you a little bit about what resource conservation districts are in general. We're created under Division Nine of the Natural Resources Code of California law. There's 98 RCDs across the state. You might think that's odd because that's more than we have counties in California. Most RCDs that have any rural land base or any working lands, so timber, agriculture, fisheries, do have at least one RCD, although some of them are sort of dormant or defunct. And some counties have more than one. And I'll just give you the example of Santa Clara County, our neighbor to the north. They have an RCD base in Gilroy called Loma Prieta. And that RCD covers the farmland area around Gilroy and to the San Benito County line. And then there's another RCD called North Santa Clara RCD. And they do work on the rural lands around San Jose, but they also work on programs in the city of San Jose. And that was another thing I wanted to mention about RCDs. They, because they were created around the same time as the USDA Soil Conservation Service back in the 1930s in response to the Dust Bowl, they originally focused on working agricultural lands. But these days, RCDs do much broader work to protect the environment. A lot of RCDs are involved in their towns and cities. Again, are one of our neighbors in Santa Clara County, the one in San Jose. They do work with urban gardens and they also do work with urban streams because there's a big river that flows through San Jose. And then our neighbors to the south in Monterey County do quite a bit of work with public parks and spaces in the towns and cities around pollinator habitat. But they also do loads of work with their agricultural producers. We're part of the Central Coast region of RCDs, and that's just a convening mechanism where we get together twice a year and share information and support one another. What makes RCDs unique is that we work on agricultural and natural resource conservation issues that are brought forward by our constituents who are the land managers. So the ranchers, the farmers, the private landowners, as well as community members. We're completely non-regulatory. We can work on regulatory issues, but we are not ourselves regulatory. And that's one of the reasons why RCDs have gained the trust of private landowners throughout the state over the decades. We're also non-advocacy, so even though we work to protect the environment, we are not out campaigning for anything political. Our services to landowners and land managers are completely confidential. They're almost always free. There are situations where RCDs can have fee-for-service programs. One example of that is some RCDs work on forest health, wildfire risk reduction programs where they might offer chipping services or other services related to reducing fuels, and they might charge for some aspect of that. But in general, our services are free because we get grant funding to provide those services. We're also local, flexible, and accountable. Like yourselves, where our meetings are open to the public. They have to be public notice, and we also are governed by the Brown Act. Our Board of Directors is, we have a board of five, so we have a fully seated and actively participating board at this time, which I'm really excited about. Board members for RCDs are required to be either landowners or designated agents of landowners. We have on our board, we have ranching represented by two of our, we have two young ranchers, we have two orchardists, and then we have someone who does ecological restoration on her private land. So we have a good representation of land uses in our county. We also try to have good geographic representation, which I feel really good about right now. We have a couple people from South County, one from Trespinos, and one from Hollister, and one from Pinoc. And I didn't talk too much about how our directors are chosen, but if I can answer questions about that, if you have any questions. Ours are appointed. We don't, we're not part of the general election process. We could be, but most RCDs, most counties prefer that RCDs do their directors by appointment, I think, to save costs on elections. RCDs, as I mentioned earlier, were created in concert with the USDA Soil Conservation Service, which nowadays is called the Natural Resources Conservation Service, or the NRCS. It's a longstanding partnership. Basically, the RCDs were created to be a local check and balance so that the federal funds coming through the Farm Bill, which is developed and hammered out in Washington DC, very far away from all of the states that have very different agricultural profiles. The RCDs were created to help make that USDA funding remain relevant and also accessible to the farmers in those individual counties. And there's still a mechanism today where, once a year, we're required to work together to have what's called a local work group meeting. And at that local work group meeting, the NRCS will put forward a menu of options of what they call natural resource concerns. It basically is topics. And we, and the RCDs often help with the outreach to farmers and ranchers to get people in the room to then rank those concerns that they have. And that information is supposed to go up the ladder to the state NRCS conservationists and help determine how they allocate their conservation funding. Often, RCDs and NRCS offices are co-located, and that's the case in Hollister. We're very fortunate that our USDA partners provide free office space to us. Currently, our office is under a remodel that's been going on for quite some time. So I've been with the RCD almost two years, and I've been working remotely the entire time. But I'm really looking forward to hopefully August. The date, the ready date keeps getting bumped out, but hopefully by August, we'll be moved into the offices which are located on Technology Parkway next to the RMA office, where Steve and Ariel work. So that is actually very helpful because, as I'll get into later, we don't have any, we don't have any automatic operating funds. We don't get any funding from the tax base or any other automatic government funding. We have to raise all the funds to run our district through grants and through other avenues. And one of the other things about this partnership that's really, can be really great is that the NRCS will often have technical people on staff, such as engineers or livestock specialists. And then, and the RCD can also have technical specialists, and there's a lot of sharing of those resources back and forth. I wanted to just share with you, you know, who some of our conservation partners are that we work with. This screen does not include all of our funders. It would be a lot more if we included all the organizations that give us funding. These are all partners that we work with directly on conservation programs and projects. And I always want to appreciate our neighboring RCDs in Santa Clara County and Monterey County and Santa Cruz County. They have been incredibly supportive during the past two years. They were so excited that there was some new energy coming back to the San Benito RCD and that some programs were going to start happening again. And they have been very generous with advice, mentorship, as well as staff resources. Both, two of them sent staff to help us plant our first project on the ground last week. So these are some of the topics that the RCD can work on. These are just examples, as I said before, RCDs, it's really locally determined what RCDs work on in terms of what the community's priorities are. But these are some of the general areas. And I think of special interest to you would be the water coordination aspect, as well as regulatory compliance, as those themes both come into play when you start to talk about flood protection and also riparian restoration, which I understand are both concerns on Pacheco Creek and in that watershed. And we're active currently in the first five bullets on this slide. We don't currently have a regulatory compliance program. We did in the past, but it has since expired, and we're not yet working on urban farming, but we hope to in the future. These are some examples of the specific things that we can help landowners and land managers with. We are currently doing pollinator and habitat plantings on farms and ranches, and we also have funding to do similar projects on public land. So I'm excited to get together with Steve and others at the RMA to talk about some potential partnership around parks that are being developed in Hollister. We can help livestock operators to improve ponds, which benefit their operation for their livestock, but also provide habitat benefits. As you probably know, we have several endangered, threatened and endangered amphibian and reptile species in San Benito County. And the pond improvements can be really important for that. We can also work on riparian or stream restoration. I always include that word "stream" for the public that may not be familiar with riparian. We don't currently have funding to do stream restoration. However, we do have funding to do one fish and wildlife habitat conservation plan for one farm or ranch owner. And so I would like to follow up with you to see if you may have suggestions. But there may possibly be some people on Pacheco Creek, even on Lover's Lane, who are interested both in flood protection and in either replacing habitat that was lost due to flood damage or enhancing the habitat that they have. And the way those things come together is that often the measures that you put in place to improve habitat for fish, for invertebrates, so the pollinator insects and other beneficial insects, the migratory songbirds, the raptor species, your hawks, owls, and so forth. A lot of times, the work you would do to improve habitat for those species also protects your stream bank from erosion and does actually provide some flood mitigation. And a little bit later, if we have time, I'd be happy to share an example of how we've seen that actually work during the most recent catastrophic flood. We also work with farmers to encourage them to use soil building practices, such as cover crops and compost. And in the past, this RCD has had a program that provided free irrigation evaluations. At this point, we don't have the in-house staff or funding to do that, but we're partnering with RCD Santa Cruz, who is offering grants to small farmers in particular. And we're helping get the word out, in particular, to our Spanish-speaking farmers in San Benito County so that they can access the state funding that our neighboring RCD is doling out through a block grant. RCDs really emphasize outreach and public education, including K-12 STEM education. There's a lot of great programs around the state that engage, you know, young people from kindergarten all the way through high school and junior college and university, providing hands-on science opportunities in the field. Examples are field days, workshops, training, school and youth events, and tours of demonstration sites. And pictured here are several examples of partner events that we've been a part of in the past couple of years. In fiscal year 23, we had three events where we either were the main sponsor or co-hosted, along with some of our partners. Everything from how to pile burn to the benefits of targeted grazing to encourage native plant species and combat invasive weeds. And the indoor meeting focused on mountain lion research that's going on in this area. In 2024, I want to call out one of the events on this slide, which was the Paharo Compass Fall Stakeholder Meeting in 2023. I know I've spoken with Michelle and one of your advisors about the Paharo Compass, but I really encourage the trustees to learn more about it. You can look it up at paharocompass.org online. It's a watershed-wide voluntary network. It covers, the Paharo River watershed, as you probably know, is very large. It's about 1,400 square miles, I believe. It includes parts of four counties, but San Benito County is right at the heart of it. And the Pacheco, of course, flows to the Paharo. And so your Pacheco stormwater issues are a very relevant issue to the Paharo River watershed. And the compass network is run by a steering committee that I've been on since its inception and includes a lot of other organizations in the region, which would be a great networking opportunity for you all. This meeting was in the fall and focused on grazing and land protection. But the meeting that we just had this May was held in Aromas, and it featured a presentation by Valley Water in Santa Clara County about their Yaugus Creek Flood Protection Project that is ongoing, a multi-year, multi-benefit project that's providing flood protection, as well as a whole host of other benefits. And that's where I learned that NRCS funding could be used to do flood protection in our area. And today I got some contacts for you, in case you don't already have them. And so hopefully you'll be, I need to add you all to our mailing list. I know, I think Michelle is on it. But it would be great to have you participate in the compass and let us know what topics are of importance. We have, we've had a couple of presentations in the past about stream maintenance programs, the one in Salinas. And then we also had a few, a few meetings that focused on the Pacheco Dam Reservoir, sorry, the Pacheco Reservoir Expansion Project. So I think it's very relevant for you. As I mentioned earlier, we're almost entirely grant-funded. One exception to that is that the county of San Benito has provided a small allocation for many years, going back at least to the mid 2000s. In the recent years, it's been in the range of $20,000 to $25,000. And that's extremely helpful because it's operating, it's funds we can use for general operating expenses or match for the grants that we have. This is a summary of all the grants that we currently have in contract. I'm not going to go through them one by one, but I wanted to give you an idea of where our funding is coming from and sort of the challenge that we have as far as managing all these different programs with separate funding sources and separate, you know, reporting requirements. The one that I had mentioned earlier, where we have a, one conservation plan that we can, we would like to do on a farm that has a stream or river running through it, is it's funded by the California Department of Agriculture, the third one, the third bullet here. And that one needs to be done by end of March 2025. So if you have landowners in mind, please contact me soon so that we can start that conversation. We're also working on a really important wildfire resiliency block grant together with UC Cooperative Extension and the San Benito Agricultural Land Trust. Some more grant funding. We have one fee-for-service contract with Audubon. And we had one very exciting grant that was awarded in April that was for capacity building, would have helped fund the executive director position for three years, as well as allow us to hire a half-time bilingual agricultural technician. And unfortunately, that grant is in limbo now due to the governor's budget revise. So we're waiting on pins and needles to find out whether we're going to have that funding or not. And then, of course, we're working with county staff, with the RMA, to develop an agricultural element for the general plan. This is a snapshot of our operating funds situation. We were extremely fortunate to be awarded a three-year operating grant from the Globe Trotter Foundation. We only applied for one year because we thought that was the only option, but they were so excited about our plans for the future that they came back with a three-year grant. And this is really, I honestly don't know what we would do without it because it's really giving us the space to figure out how to have staff for the first time. I became an employee about a week ago. I've been working as a contractor all this time on a very part-time basis. And I believe I'm the first employee, that direct employee that this San Benito RCD has ever had. I haven't found no record of any other in the past. All other staff were either contractors or they were hired by neighboring districts in Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, or Santa Clara County. So this is a big capacity building transition for us. And being the only person on the staff at the RCD and also having to be the personnel department and the IT department and everything, and the program implementation department, is quite a challenge. But I'm feeling really excited. I'm getting ready to fly the position for our first support staff person, hopefully by the end of this week. And by the end of fall, I hope we'll have at least one other person onboard. So it's messy and it takes a long time, but I think we're getting there finally. I was just going to highlight what one of our on-the-ground projects looks like. This is one on a farm on the Paharo River where they had extensive flooding in the winter of 2023. In fact, what you see in the photo on the left is the, that is the Paharo. And on the other side of the farm, they have the Millers Canal. And this, the organic vegetable farm that sits between those waterways was flooded three different times in three ways. And in some of those, they got water from both directions. So really pretty well inundated. And it's amazing to me that these farmers have the resiliency and optimism that they, they're still interested in improving pollinator habitat on their farm. As part of this project, we will also be planting a riparian area about 1,000 feet in length that will be planting the now bear banks of the Paharo where it flooded. We're going to have that planting pulled back a little ways so that we don't have to do earthmoving and things that would trigger a lot of permitting and really delay things. We'll be planting a native plant hedgerow with riparian species that is pulled back a little bit. But we've seen on a neighboring farm, also on Fraser Lake Road, in fact, you might have seen it driving past there if you're really paying attention. There's another farm where a similar hedgerow was planted in 2018. And that farmer reported after 2023 that that section only of her banks did not get destroyed in the floods. So we had, it gives me goosebumps. I get very excited about this. But it shows that when you get deep roots down into the soil in the right place, we know we don't want them in the middle of the stream, and I know that's a big issue on Pacheco Creek. But when you have healthy native riparian plants on the stream bank where they're supposed to be, they really do a beautiful job of resisting erosion and resisting damage. So that's what we're hoping to add to this farm as well. And that plan that I mentioned earlier, that where we have the funding to do the plan part of it, it could be planning something like this. And then the farmer would end up with, or the landowner with sort of a blueprint for how to go forward with a project like this. And the RCD would be able to apply for funding to help them implement it. So these are pictures from just last week where we put our first 400-foot pollinator hedgerow in the ground. All of the people in these photos are from partner organizations. So it really demonstrates how well-supported we are right now in that regard. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Carminder. I think I can speak for the other trustees. We're all sort of new to this world of special districts and conservation and riparian planting, and even the word riparian, we're all new to it. And so you're explaining what you're doing at the RCD is really enlightening. So thank you, and it's exciting, too. So congratulations on becoming a regular staff person.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. And I hope that we'll have more conversations and probably we should schedule a meeting where we can talk more about how we might be able to collaborate in the future.
Yes, well, I was able to attend your May meeting, as you know. And I met the USDA, the local USDA rep there, the NRCS rep, right? James Booth. And then he put us in contact with an engineer. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But it's all about, a lot of it is about making connections. And so I appreciate already the connections that you've allowed me to make on behalf of the district, so.
Good, that's great. That's really what I'm good at, this administrative stuff. It's a little bit new for me also. But yeah, I'm happy to connect you with resources. And I think, you know, at this point, like I said, since we're in such a capacity building phase ourselves where we need to be a little careful not to like grow too quickly, like we definitely need to get some more staff onboard to help me before I bite off something really big like a Pacheco Creek, you know, watershed-wide program. But I'm quite serious when I say we can do it. We absolutely can do it. We just need a lot of funding. And I think it would work best if it is a multi-partnership approach where the county is involved and the stormwater district and the RCD, and we all have specific roles to play. But, and it's not too early to talk about that. So it's just something that will take time to build.
Yes, I've been hearing that over and over again, that when we want to approach government agencies for grant opportunities, that if we have several agencies involved, then those are going to be more attractive projects. Plus, we don't have much capacity on our own. As you can see, we only have three trustees. There are, we could have five, but there's only three of us. And we don't have any staff. And so we really do need to partner with other agencies, other districts, the county.
Well, by way of encouragement, I can tell you that the San Benito RCD for the past 15 years or so that I've been paying attention to what they're doing, often had, even if they had five seated members, they might not have, they would only have three active members, and that's been an ongoing theme. And so I'm here to tell you that it is possible to, you know, move past that. And I'd even be happy to talk to you to brainstorm about potential or I could share with you how I went about recruiting the people that I have on my board now that I am so grateful because they're all, they're all, they're all working directors. They're all helping me to build the RCD. And without them, we wouldn't be where we are now. So.
Well, that is exciting and encouraging. So I think, I think that, yeah, this is just the beginning of the conversation, so.
So do the other trustees have any comments or questions? Oh, yeah, Steve. Oh, public comment, yes. Thank you.
If you'd like to make a comment via Zoom, use the Raise Hand icon featuring by dialing star nine. There appears to be no public comment right now.
All right, well, thank you, Carminder. So we will move on then to item 5.2, where we are going to consider a resolution ordering an election for two seats on the district. So let's see, who will be presenting on that? Victor, wonderful, thank you, Victor.
Yes, so on May 29, we received communications from the Chief Deputy Clerk Recorder's election addressing, addressed to the Pacheco Stormwater District concerning the requirements and preparation for the upcoming presidential general election scheduled for November 5, 2024. And some important dates and requirement documents to take into consideration is that first July 3, 2024, there should be a submission of the Notice of Election, Statement of Election Facts, and a map. facts, and a map showing the district boundaries. On August 9, 2024, there is another deadline for the submission of an adopted resolution and service agreement. Regarding costs, election costs are estimated between $400 and $10,000. Costs are shared across all jurisdictions on the ballot, with fees adjusted based on the numbers of contests and registration numbers. The nomination fee of $400 applies if a contest does not appear on the ballot. Otherwise, the fee is multiplied by registration numbers and the contest appears on the ballot. The fee is charged only once if there are only two or more larger contests. The positions that are up for reelection are currently held by trustee Alfaro and trustee Escona. That's all the information that I have at this moment. I do have a meeting tomorrow with the Elections Department to get more information as to how we could submit those documents.
Okay.
And there is an attached resolution on the agenda item for your consideration.
Yes. Okay, before we start discussing, and before I forget, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
Okay, great. Okay. So I want to, I'm looking at the statement of election facts first. I noticed, and this is great, thank you for putting, I'm assuming you put this together?
Yes.
Okay. I did notice one thing that I think we probably have to change, and that is, on the qualifications, you say must be a registered voter and reside within the Pacheco Stormwater District. You actually have to reside and be a landowner, property owner, is my understanding.
That is a good question that I could figure out. Hopefully get an answer tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, we went over that issue before with Sean. I don't, I don't think Sean, is Sean on the Zoom?
I believe he is.
He is.
I am, I'm on. Yeah, I think that was the finding, yeah, right, that they had to be both in the jurisdiction and a property owner, yeah.
So we'll have to change that. The other thing I noticed, so I assume that we have to have our addresses on this statement here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I was going to say, because I noticed that my address is listed as a mailing address, and I was going to ask if we could put the county's address there, but I don't know if it matters since we all have our addresses listed here anyway. Mail should be addressed to, well, yeah, I guess it doesn't really matter then. I know that we've used the county's address, we've been using the county's address for certain purposes, and I don't know if that's, it's appropriate to continue doing that. Does anybody have any input on that?
We could, I could take a further look into that to see where we could use the county's address.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be, that might be helpful. And then in terms of the fee, it's a little confusing, but the way I understand it, if someone wants to run to be a trustee, there is this fee which is 400, at least 400, or could be more than 400, or?
On the document that we received from the Elections Department, it said 400 to $1,000, and it looks like it's a shared contribution to the cost of the election.
Okay. And that's just the cost of the election in general? It doesn't have, because I was thinking, well, if you're not going to have a candidate's statement, for instance, in the little booklet that they send out, if you choose not to do a statement, do you still have to pay the 400, or it's just in order to run, you have to, you have to pay the 400?
Good question that I could ask the Recorder's Office.
When you, when you had emailed me, I said, well, we don't have any money, so I guess the candidates will have to pay. But I don't, I don't know, I don't want to discourage people from running. You know, it's a struggle to get people interested in this to begin with. So if we put up even more barriers in the form of fees, then even fewer people will be interested. I mean, we do have an account, we could use some money. So we could discuss that, I guess, as a, as a board about, but, but it would be nice to know a little bit more about the fees, you know? I mean, $400, well, I guess, you know, depending on how many people run, that wouldn't be too expensive, but if it's going to be thousands of dollars, then, I don't know. Do we have to adopt this resolution today, tonight? Is there, are we facing a deadline?
The resolution itself, there is a deadline, I believe that's going to be for August 9, 2024. The current deadlines that we, that should be submitted is the notice of election and the statement of election facts. I believe the statement of election facts is a second attachment to that, to that agenda item.
And I'm quickly reading this, does the statement of election facts say that people, candidates have to pay? Well, the entity charged, well, it does say that, the entity charged for the candidate's statements sent to each voter will be the candidate. So this just has to do with the candidate's statement, right? It's not, you could, you could, you could, in theory, run without publishing a candidate's statement?
I think so, yes, yeah.
Okay, but we have a deadline on this statement of election facts, so I guess we have to decide tonight then.
Yes, but that statement of election does not need to be, it's not a resolution that needs to be, I guess, signed, or, I think.
Okay, so it's only the resolution itself ordering the election that we need to vote on?
And if you, the Board of Trustees is not ready to vote on this agenda item, we can always call for a special meeting.
Well, are there any thoughts on this?
I don't know, well, but I don't know when, when that would be.
I don't even know when people have to declare their candidacy. So we just have to, we have to make a decision about whether or not we're going to cover certain costs, or we're going to make the candidates cover them. So do we, do we want to use some of the money that we have in the bank to, to cover?
If we're looking at 400 per person?
$400 minimum. It could be $3,000.
I don't know if we can be able to cover that with what we have on the account and still have something.
Well, right, we don't want to use all the, all of it for this.
We'll need it for other things.
Well, and it sort of begs the question, I guess, like, what if nobody wants to run? What happens? I mean, I'll still be here because my term doesn't end until 2026, but like, what if nobody runs? Does, I guess the board has to appoint people? I don't know.
Yeah, so if nobody runs for those positions, we wouldn't be able to reach a quorum.
Yeah, that's right. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have a district. But if, but it would still be possible for the Board of Supervisors to appoint directors in that case, right? Sean, can you chime in here?
Yeah, I would assume that that's the way it goes. I'm not totally sure. I haven't encountered that scenario before. And with respect to the paying for it, I don't know if the district itself can pay for each candidate's candidacy. It strikes me as something, if there was a candidate that wasn't part of the, you know, the board already, would that be fair? And how would that work? I'm not totally sure.
Yeah, I don't know either. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us really want to pay the, these fees. It's just that the fees are going to be one more barrier to getting people interested in running.
It may be something to appeal to the county for, too, to say, hey, maybe you can help us with this effort. Yeah, that might be an avenue.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, because we haven't had, I don't know the last time that this district had an election. I don't know if I ever remember voting for anyone. Well, Armando, you haven't lived on Lover's Lane that long, but Paula, do you ever remember voting for anybody? So I just don't know how this works. I mean, oh, yes, Ariel.
So the district had been inactive for decades, and so when it was initially restarted, we didn't go through the election process. We just restarted and appointed, but now that it's been operating, it's part to go through the election process. So it was because the district had been inactive.
Right, no, I realize that. I know, I'm just wondering, though, if, you know, if, it's kind of like, what if you have a party and no one comes? What if you hold an election and no one runs? I don't, I don't know.
Also, another question that I had, maybe for Sean, is portion of the district lies within Santa Clara County, and I have not received anything from their Elections Department as to how we're going to get on the ballot over there, so.
Okay, yeah, noted. Yeah, that could be a complication, too. It would, I'm assuming since it, since we do lie in some of their jurisdiction, that they would have to be a part of this process, yeah.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, do we have to have an election?
I was pondering that myself. Could you do it by appointment? I'm not sure.
I was just thinking, because Carminder was just here and said, oh, we don't have elections.
Right, I noticed that myself, right? And I did sort of foresee this cost issue being potentially an issue. So I, I don't know. I'm not sure if that applies to districts like yourselves, but I can certainly find out.
Yeah, Sean, I was going to say, we could look into how this district was formed, and we would have to probably maybe amend that, so it went from being elected to appointed.
Right.
We have the founding documents. I have to go back and look at them. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that it talks about elections.
As we're talking, I think you're right, it does. I think it does. That said, you're right, I haven't taken a close look in a long time, so.
Okay, well, Sean, do you have any advice on what, how we should proceed this evening? What do you, I mean?
What, I mean, we need to determine, yeah, which pieces do we need to act on tonight? It sounds like we're not ready to act on the pieces that we don't have to act on. There are timing considerations with this, though, and I, so for those pieces, yeah, we should, if we can, act on those. But yeah, I'll do the minimal required at this point, and then we can take it back and figure out what to do.
Okay. Well, we have, we've already talked about the statement of election. That's the first thing that has a deadline, right?
Correct.
the way we have it right now is that each candidate will have to pay for their statement. We can just leave it at that, I guess, for now. And Victor, you said that we didn't have to actually vote on this statement of election So, I mean, I don't, I.
Well, if, yeah, if the district, if it does have a selection for, the entity charged for the candidate's statement sent to each voter will be, and you can select districts, so.
Yeah.
It seems to me that the district could pay for it, and we do have some funds, right? We have.
Yeah, we have.
Coming in, but there is a bucket of funds.
Yeah, we have about $50,000.
Right.
So, I mean, if there weren't that many people running, and it was only $400, then it would be.
Right. And is it a flat? Is it $400 for each candidate, or is it $400 for the election and the statement and that sort of thing?
I believe it's $400 for the statement that each candidate's going to have to submit, and I think it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's per candidate, is it?
Correct.
Okay.
And I could verify tomorrow with the Elections Department.
Okay.
But again, you could run and just not put a statement in if you didn't want to, right? Because I'm thinking of those voter information guides, and most of them do have statements, but there are some people listed that don't, right? So.
I suppose, yeah, it is the cost, is it entirely for the statement itself, or is there other costs that the $400 is attributed to? I'm not sure.
That's what we're not sure about.
Yeah.
Okay, any, has anybody changed their mind about this? About, about this? There doesn't, there doesn't seem to be a consensus for the district paying for the candidate's statements. Am I reading that correctly?
That's only if you're putting a statement. I mean, if you don't put a statement, then there's no $400 or whatever.
Well, that's what we're trying to determine.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that's how it should be, but I can verify tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it does say here, the entity charged for the candidate's statement, it does, so, sent to each voter. It doesn't say anything about actually filing, I don't even know how, filing an application to run.
Yeah, that might, yeah, that might make sense, too, because if you're putting a statement forward, then it's sort of individualized, and it's a dish, it's in addition to all the other pieces that are part of the election, so that makes sense to me.
Right, I mean, I don't, I'm very fuzzy, well, I don't know anything about the process of actually running. Like, I imagine that you have to file something with the Elections Department to be on the ballot, right? But I'm, I'm very fuzzy on that. It also says, in case of a tie vote, the winner will be determined by lot. So that, I don't know how that exactly works. So I don't know, who, who draws straws, then? And I don't know, how does that, flip a coin? I don't, what does that mean? I don't, does anybody know?
I think it is actually as rudimentary as that. I think it is. It's a flip of a coin or a picking of straws. I think it is.
But who does that? The Elections Office, or?
I have a feeling, yeah, it'd be some sort of official, they would show up maybe at one of these meetings and do it, yeah.
Okay, I kind of like that. It's kind of fun and old-fashioned, so we don't necessarily need to have a runoff election, unless anybody objects to that, drawing lots. Okay, well, I, so Sean, do you agree that we don't? Okay, well, I, so Sean, do you agree that we don't have to vote on this statement of election facts? Or do we, do we need to have some kind of vote to approve?
I think you need a vote. There is, and there's a signature on it too. So I think there is a, yeah, you should come to a consensus.
True. Okay. Okay, well.
Is that the piece we need to act on tonight with regard to the timing?
Yes, the statement of election facts, yes.
Okay. But the resolution we can wait on, is that?
Current.
Until August, is that, okay.
Okay, so maybe that's what we should do. Maybe we should just vote on whether we approve the, the statement of election facts as presented here in the board packet.
Yes, or with your modifications that you've mentioned.
About the, the address, yes. If, if possible, yes. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the, the statement of election with the modification? Or maybe I should just make the motion. I'll just do it. I, I move that we approve the statement of election facts as presented in the board packet with the modification that the mailing address for any mail to the district be changed to the county address that we're currently using, which I, I think is the one on Fourth Street, I believe, county council's office. Is there a second?
I second that.
All tho, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. I guess that's it for this agenda item? Or was there anything else that we needed to do?
That is it.
Right now. Okay. So then, at our next meeting, we'll have more information, and we can talk about other aspects of, of the election again.
Yes.
Really quick, I can add, from researching in old emails. So Sean, you had sent this previously, and it's state law under section 13-5, governing board trustees, election qualifications bond, California water. Under section five, it states that each stormwater district shall be under the control of three trustees to be elected as here, hereafter provided, who shall constitute the governing board thereof. Each trustee shall be a freeholder of the district and shall have resided therein at least one year next preceding his or her election, provided however, that when unincorporated territory is included with unincorporated territory in the district, at least one of the trustees shall be an eligible freeholder of the unincorporated territory, if an eligible person resides in the unincorporated territory and shall post a bond in the sum the Board of Supervisors who form the district determines. The bonds shall be approved by a superior judge of the county filed with the county clerk thereof. The trustees, except those first elected, shall take office at noon of the last Friday of November in which they were elected, and shall hold office for the term of four years until their successors are elected and qualified. So I believe it's under the state laws and requirements of forming water districts that requires it to be elected. And so I think we would, per that, have to follow the election requirements.
Okay, thank you, Ariel. I just realized when you were reading that, that we approved this statement, and there is another modification that needs to be made. And that is to the qualifications of the nominees. We didn't, it has to be a freeholder. In other words, a property owner, as well as reside. And we didn't, we didn't make that part of our motion. So Sean, what do we do with that?
I would make a new motion. Yeah, make a new one.
Okay. All right. So we are not done with this agenda item. I am going to move that we approve the statement of election as presented in the board packet with two modifications. One pertaining to the mailing address, that it be the county address and not my home address. And the second modification being that the qualifications of a nominee, we, it should be added that the officers, the elective officers have to both reside and own property within the Pacheco Stormwater District area. Is there a second to the motion?
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that, I'm glad that we got that. The motion carries. Okay, so we'll, we will discuss this again at the next meeting, I guess. Seems like we do have to have an election. But we, maybe we'll have some more questions answered with regard to fees and so forth.
Definitely, yeah. Any questions that you have in mind, feel free to send me an email, and I will let them know to the elections department.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Victor, for your work on this. Okay, so let's move on to 5.3. And this is Steve. Update regarding debris removal and levee repair.
All right. Good evening, trustees. Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator. And we're discussing item 5.3. An update regarding debris removal and levee repairs. So regarding the debris removal, we essentially had three very, we had, we actually had five sites, but we ended up with three very large piles of vegetation that was placed on the properties adjacent to the levee where they were removed. And so two of the three sites have now been actually burned. And I have to go back, I was there a couple of weeks ago, when they were almost done with the burning. I have not been back in the last week and week and a half to see if they've, they were going to start kind of mixing it into the soil that was near the debris onsite. I've not actually been back to see if that's been accomplished. The third site is actually on the northeast corner of Lover's Lane and Pacheco Creek. And that debris pile's near some orchards, and those trees are pretty much aged, well, they're aged, I'll just say that. And so what we're trying to do, and I called Cal Fire, I think, for that debris pile, the strategy currently is to try to get what they call a curtain burner, which is just a big metal box where you can place what, the vegetation that you're burning. Cal Fire right now does not have, as of two weeks ago, they did not have one available. I'll call them back again this week and see if they have a curtain burner available. I think that is the best strategy for that site, because it orchards kind of surrounds the pile. The other two sites were near just row crops and near the levee itself. And so there wasn't necessarily a, it wasn't as difficult to burn. So those two piles have been burned. So, so that's the status on debris removal. On the levee repairs, so we've kind of had to pause the last levee repair per, some direction from the permitting agencies. And the last step is to complete a planting plan, which will be, consists of native hydroseeds, and then a mitigation monitoring plan to monitor how the plants are progressing. And just for clarity, the native hydroseed will be on the creek side. And then, actually, the property owner has their own funding through, I think it's, I believe it's a grant to do some pollinator planting on the property side. And the permitting agencies, they say that's great. That's good. We like that. So we, me, I've been paused. I need to finish up the permit application for the water board and submit it and get that in their queue with a mitigation monitoring plan. So that's, that's the status. And we'll talk about the FEMA, the actual FEMA status in a moment, but I'll just pause for questions on the debris removal or the levee repair.
Steve, when do you think you'll have that permit in to the water board? What's the timing on that?
So, great question. I was hoping to get it done, I don't know, a week or two ago. I had had some questions with one of our environmental consultants to help us with the monitoring, mitigation monitoring plan. And we just played phone tag a bit, and it's, it's in my court to get back. So to answer your question, hopefully by the end of this week or early next week, we can, I should be able to get that to you. I think you have to actually sign it. And then, just so you know, I think there's an application fee of either $1,400 or $2,400 roughly. I think you and I discussed that briefly, but so we'll have to request that fee from our auditors, so they can issue that application fee. So.
And how long, I mean, I know you're, you don't work for the water board, but how long do you think it'll take for them to approve the permit? I mean, I guess, the, I imagine the idea is to get this done before it starts raining again, right?
Right. So according to them, where they're at with their queue, and this was a discussion I had, gosh, over a month ago. And I don't know if any new permits have been applied, but when I talked to the person who was on vacation for a while, and then was, went to, anyway, she was not available for a while. She thought that she would be getting to the end of her queue in August, the beginning of August. So hopefully that's when she would get to our permit, if, unless something more permits have been submitted in the last few weeks. So.
Okay. All right.
That's the status.
So hopefully, we can get this submitted in the next couple of weeks, you think? Okay. And then my other question was, in terms of the burning, if it, if the last pile is done in a curtain burner, is there still a cutoff, like after a certain date, they're not going to want you to burn? Or does that matter?
Actually, no. As far as burning goes, it depends on the day. But even the way it works is you, you call in to the airboard and the fire department, and you say, okay, is this a good burn day? But they actually have burning going on even now, when you're hearing about all these fires and things. But as long as you have a controlled burn at a certain site, and there's not certain wind conditions, there really isn't much of a, they're allowing burning even ongoing now, I'll just say that. So, yeah. And with the curtain burner, I think, I don't know for sure, but I think it'll, it'll even be less restrictive, because you're just placing it in a very controlled container, essentially. So.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the trustees? Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment via Zoom. Rochelle, Rochelle Beery, you have been muted.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions, Steve, on the fire burner. I thought last we heard on the fire burners that they were all located on the other side of the country, like Florida and so forth, and that we weren't able to have access to the fire burners. So I have a couple of questions. I'll just say my questions first, and then we can address them, I guess, is the best way. Regarding the permit from the water board on finishing the levee, I did talk to a contact at Valley Water District, and she said that the water board takes, you know, six, you're lucky if you get it approved in six months. So I think we need to get confirmation on that, because we're already hitting July 1. And that would put us in the rainy season without the repairs being done, and all that investment being potentially washed down the creek. And I also wanted to say that, as the property owner, where the levee repair is taking place, I personally am very frustrated with the fact that the project has been stalled as long as it has. Once it started, we got, I think, a third of the way done. And, you know, I, I have unusable sections of that land, and we're renting it out to a farmer, and it's permit, it's prohibiting him from farming. And I just have an open-ended big project that's going to require big equipment to come back onto the property. Also not a great thing for farmland. So I just wanted to share my frustrations and see how we can get this project back on board. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll answer the questions in order, I guess. Yeah, the curtain burner, I, if I had said it was, they were loaned out of state, I probably misspoke. I don't know if that was the case. At one point, we were trying to rent some from out of state, because the ones in state were being utilized by Cal Fire. But talking to the chief at Cal Fire, they're in his division, which is this general area, I'll say, but they do loan them to other Cal Fire folks. So again, I'll come again this week and see if they're available. And no one has said we can't burn the last pile near that orchard. It's just, from what I, my understanding is, it would just be a lot easier and simpler. And, and so that's my recommendation on the curtain burner. Regarding the permits, we actually have another permit we're processing through the agencies. And that one's taken, you know, roughly a month, month and a half, but it's about to be issued. So the six month, I think, we also experienced that with some of our bridge projects and things. So I think it's, it's project dependent. And I'm not trying to pretend that it's, the permits are processed quickly, but again, one of ours is basically taken about six weeks. And then some of our bridge permits are six months or longer sometimes. So, so there's a range. And I understand, we want to get this finished as well. It's, it's one last piece of all the levee repairs. And, I mean, the good news is, all the levee repairs are repaired to an elevation that's pretty much higher than the general levee itself. So the water level, I think if it spilled, would be in a different location. But, but nevertheless, we do want to finish this piece that is being held up, just like you mentioned. So I understand. So we'll move forward ASAP.
Is there any other public comment?
Looks like Rochelle Beery would like to speak again.
Steve, I wanted to ask, on the levee project, are we going to be able to use the riprap that's sitting in the field? Or is that in question? Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for the question. So ultimately, yes, I don't honestly know if it's going to be for this season or not, because one thing the water board has said was, if we want to use a riprap, we might have to do creek hydraulic operations study. And so what they recommended is, we'll just, we'll submit the permit for the levee repair as is, and, and get that permitted so that the levee itself can be repaired. And then, And then if the board wants to move forward with the hydraulic study, we'll have that discussion and get a price for that. That means we have to hire a hydrologist and some things. But I think the first step is to submit the permit and see where that goes. And, and then we'll move forward with the riprap on a, on a separate track. I think that's my recommendation. So.
Any other public comment?
We have Rochelle Beerly with another question.
My question is, Steve, on the riprap, how would the levee withstand another breach without the support of riprap? Because, you know, all along the line, the creek area where it has been previously restored from previous breaches, it's all been finished with riprap. That was through the, I guess, the Army Corps and also the one, the Big Flood that took place in 2017. So how do we keep the, and they, and they all survived the breach? So how would that protect the levee without the riprap? Thank you.
Okay. So some of the creek has riprap. The restored area definitely has riprap from 2017. Quite a bit of the creek, at least that I've walked, does not have riprap. So it was pretty much just, I think, from what I can tell, built by maybe farmers over the years. There are some sections with the riprap. So it's obviously better, but I wouldn't say that all the creek by any means is lined with riprap today. When I walked it, the majority actually is, does not have riprap on the banks. So, yeah. So I'll just pause there.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
There appears to be no further public comment.
Okay, then we will move on to 5.4, update on the status of the FEMA applications.
Okay, 5.4. Let's see. So the FEMA applications, we have uploaded the burn permits. And so now we're in the, we're entering data, which is in the EHP phase, which is Environment and Historical Preservation Phase of the application, which is good. So I've been answering some questions in there. And hopefully I can get through that this week, actually. And so then we will submit it officially to FEMA's Group for Environmental Review, which, so that's a debris removal status. And so that brings us to the levee repairs. We did that, gosh, back in October. And then FEMA asked a question and it's been just pending for the levee repairs in FEMA's environmental review stage since March. And the current FEMA project manager has made a note to FEMA that yes, the project is in pending environmental review since March of 2024. And these two items pertain to reimbursements and how we can get, the district can be reimbursed. What I've been told by FEMA is that they have a very limited environmental staff. And so they're taking, it takes a while to get through that process. And we've had actually two project managers from FEMA, you know, ask their question, ask the environmental group to make progress. And it's just kind of been stuck in limbo since March. There are other projects, we talked to some other agencies with similar situations. They're kind of stuck in FEMA's environmental review for months. They didn't say exactly how many months, but for months. And so it's a little bit of a bottleneck at FEMA. So that's the status of the applications.
Steve, I've been getting emails about a project deadline coming up on July 14th.
Correct. Yes. Those actually, just for his information, when we originally started the process, there, we were going to have the levee repairs processed under the first set of storms. And I think we called the project Three Levee Repairs. That project is, has been, it's just sort of a placeholder. And when you read the, the status updates, it says, what is the status of our three levee repairs from the first storm event? And so the active levee repairs we've been working on are actually for $46.99, the second event. So the pending one is just, it's, it's been a placeholder that we haven't acted on. So the debris removal, we acted on based on the first event, first storm event. And the levee repairs, we acted on based on the second storm event because FEMA said, well, you know, the worst case scenario for the levee was on after the second set of storms, you know, it breached and then probably washed out some more during the second set of storms. And so they said, well, we're just going to track the levee repairs during the second set of storms. So yeah, the status update was for that placeholder, three repairs, three levee repairs, I think is the one we, you and I get status on. So.
So we're not really moving forward with that one then?
Right. That one was just, that one's going to be essentially deleted at some point by FEMA. We've told them they can delete it anytime they want. They just haven't deleted that one yet. So we kind of have two levee projects going on right now, but the, the first one is just, was just a placeholder. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Are there any questions or comments from the trustees? Is there any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment via Zoom, please use the raise hand icon feature by dialing star nine. There appears to be no public comment.
All right. We will move on then. Thank you, Steve. So the next thing on the item is a discussion of the proposed Pacheco Dam expansion. So we've talked about this at the last meeting. And, excuse me. We declined at that time to consider any kind of resolution formally supporting the project. And as you remember, we had, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we did have someone from Valley Water give a presentation about the, the expansion. So the question now is that one of our advisory board members, Rochelle Beerly, has been in contact with the group that is opposed to the Pacheco Dam expansion. I guess they have a website and she contacted them and she did get an email response from them. And I'll ask her to explain that in a minute. But the question, I guess, before us is, do we want to invite anyone from the no campaign to give a presentation here about why they think that the proposed dam expansion is a bad thing? So that's, that's the question. So now we'll go to the public comment. And I don't know if Rochelle can chime in.
Comment via Zoom, use the raise hand icon featuring by dialing star nine. Rochelle, you've been muted.
Okay. Thank you. Just, that's a very simple follow-up on my part. I just wanted to reach out to the Stop the Pacheco Dam group because they are very opposed to the whole expansion. And upon, you know, looking into the group, they have the support of, you know, big environmental groups. Like, I think, not NRDC, but maybe Sierra Club and just notable environmental groups that are supporting the stopping of the dam. So my question was why? And it took a long time to get ahold of this group because you can't send them an email or you can't send them emails, but they, they just tend not to answer or reply. And I think it's run by different law firms. But I think it would be interesting to just hear the other side and find out why the environmental groups that are, you know, the notable environmental groups are opposed to it. So I think it's crucial for us to make a good decision because we're here to try to avoid the future flooding of our, of our land. And I think it helps to get both sides. So that was my thought on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Is there any other public comment on this item?
There appears to be no other public comment.
Okay. So there isn't anything to, there isn't anything to vote on here, but I was just interested if, to hear if there was interest from the trustees in inviting the Stop the Pacheco Dam side to hear their, their side.
I think so it can be a good idea to find out why they don't want it. I mean, when the other person he come in and explaining what is the situation to spend the dam is to save more water than this and that. I agree with that, you know, because for the last few years, it's not raining too much. So it's good to saving water. But at the same time, it's good to find out why they don't want it to, to have the dam spent.
Okay.
So I think so it can be a good idea to find out why they don't agree with that idea.
Okay. Thank you for that input. Trustee Escona, do you have any input?
I also agree. I mean, we, right now, have the knowledge of that one-sided that we already had a presentation on, so we need to see what the other side is. Currently, we have one area of the creek that has not been fixed yet. So we need to find out, you know, what, what we can do is, you know, if this is really going to affect us, how much is it going to affect us? So I would think that we need to hear the other side also.
Okay. Well, I will ask Rochelle for her contact and I will, I will invite them. I don't know if they'll come, but I will invite them. Certainly by Zoom, you know, they can do a presentation. So I will do that. All right then. I think we can move on to 5.6, which is an update from the advisory board regarding grant and other funding opportunities. So as I mentioned briefly earlier, on Friday, Steve and I had a Zoom meeting with a couple of folks from the USDA, NRCS, all the acronyms. And NRCS, that is the division of the USDA that Carminder was referencing in her presentation. And they, they have, USDA does have grants available. And so they put us in contact with an engineer, Ernesto Riva, I believe was his name. And so we had a meeting about whether or not there would be a project that could be suitable for our district to apply for. And I'll just quickly go through my takeaways and then I'll, I'll ask Steve for his input on the meeting. But what I, what I gathered is that they do not fund maintenance. So they're not going to help us maintain the, the channels and the levees. They do, however, have money available for long-term fixes. So for instance, channel widening or some big project similar. There are, of course, some requirements. There has to be an economic benefit to an agricultural district. It has to protect a watershed. I, I mean, I think we would probably meet a lot of those requirements. It sounded to me like though, that before we even bother applying, we, we would need something that he called an H&amp;H study, which is some kind of hydraulics study. Without that, they would, from what he said, it sounded like they wouldn't be inclined to, well, any grant application that we did with them wouldn't get very far without an H&amp;H study. We also need a match. So you would need to come up with some funds. Although they would pay, if they, if they, if we propose something and they approved it, they would pay 100%, 100% of the design and implementation. But we would need to put up some money on our own. So that was what I got out of it. Steve, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, you gave a real good summary. He did mention that we'd have to do hydraulics and hydrology study, H&amp;H study, like you mentioned. And a couple, a couple of notes on that. One, I worked with OES in Madison. We applied for, I believe it was about a half a million dollars to do an H&amp;H study specifically for Pacheco Creek on a different grant project or a different grant opportunity. And it was not approved. However, also, one thing that Congresswoman Lofgren's office has helped us with, the county had reached out to their office to see if we could expand the capacity of Soap Lake, or some people call it San Felipe Lake, which is downstream of Pacheco Creek, where the Pacheco Creek empties into Soap Lake and then Soap Lake goes to Miller Slough and then that all goes to the Paharo River. So Soap Lake is somewhat of a detention holding area. And so her team thought that was a good idea. And so step one of that is actually to perform a hydraulic study of the whole area and see, you know, is it feasible? Is it possible? And so they submitted that request for a study. So that's another parallel kind of track that we're pursuing. And I don't know when we'll know if that goes through Congress. I think it's within a few months we'll know. And so there's possibility. But somehow, somewhere, we have to get a study performed of the area just to see how much flow, where the flows are coming from, where they're going and, and just the volume of flows, basically. And then see how we can address the situation. So once, you're, you're correct, Rochelle. Once we get that study completed somehow, some way, then it sounded pretty hopeful that USDA, NRCS would, could possibly, you know, put, fund a project, design and fund a project, help with flood mitigation. So that part was very encouraging. So.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I know we, I believe we have a representative, Representative Lofgren's office on the line. I don't know if he would like to, to say anything about that, that request for, for the study that.
Jordan. Hi, there. My name is Jordan. I do work for Congresswoman Lofgren. I was pegged for attending this meeting for this issue, but more specifically even the FEMA reimbursement questions you guys had and making sure that everything, our kind of our ducks are in a row. I will let our DC staff reach out to you guys about the hydraulic study. I believe there's been movement on it, but I don't know precisely which. I'm kind of here to listen and make sure I can inform our DC staff about the concerns that you guys have so we can pitch it back to DC and make sure we get moving on stuff.
Thank you very much, Jordan. We really appreciate your presence here. And we appreciate the Congresswoman Lofgren's interest in our district as well. So, yeah, so we, and basically the bottom line is I think we need to get one of these studies done somehow. So hopefully we can get it done in this way. But if not, I, I mean, it sounds like the kind of thing we're going to need for probably other grants that we would want as well. So. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Rochelle Beerly. You've been in muted.
Oh, yes. Rochelle has some other updates. Oh, yes, Rochelle has some other updates. Hi Rochelle.
Hi Rochelle. I was just going to ask, is the, is it possible to use the hydraulic study from the dam group? I'm sure they, I'm sure they've conducted them and have them. Are those applicable? Are those universal that we would be able to use?
So we're, this is Steve. We're on the same page when, when we first, or when I first heard about the Pacheco Dam, Pacheco reservoir expansion, I reached out to Valley Water to ask if they'd performed a study of our watershed. And their response was, we were hoping that the county had done a recent study of Pacheco Creek watershed that they could use actually for what they call the Upper Pajaro watershed. Long story short, they have not performed a study of our county area. Their study for the dam was upstream of the dam and the flows of the tributary area of, of the dam itself, I guess you'd say. And they didn't really continue that study downstream, I was told. So I'll reach out again to double check, but they were pretty clear that they didn't go down near where we are in the county, because a dam essentially dams up everything upstream from there. Now, I think they would be amenable to helping and partnering because if they're releasing flows into Pacheco Creek, then they should have an understanding of, you know, the capacity of Pacheco Creek. The flows they're going to release are not real big flows, so they could, but long story short, I'll reach out to them again and, and see if we can work together, I guess, to try to create or produce that type of study. So, good question.
Thank you, Steve. And Rochelle, who is on our advisory board, I believe that you had maybe some other updates about contacts you had made, grant related? Am I correct about that?
Ah, it doesn't ring a bell to me. Maybe I'm blanking out, but if you can try to trigger my memory a little bit more, that would be good.
I think it was about your contacts with Valley Water, but that may have had more to do with the permit issue that we already talked about. So maybe that's what I'm thinking of. So that's okay, if you don't have anything. Is there any other public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to add on that topic because we have not really had a chance to follow up on that conversation with, that I had with Valley Water District. But I thought the most intriguing part of my conversation with them was that they do not receive any grant funding. All of their, you know, their finances are provided for through taxation, you know, the water, the clients in Santa Clara County. So that one, I want, I did want to see what your thoughts were on that and find out, does San Benito Water District get funding through taxation, through the taxpayers also? Does anybody have any knowledge on that one?
Steve, do you have any knowledge of that?
I don't, just because I'm not in their district where I live. So yeah, we probably, I can definitely ask them how they obtain their revenue or jump on their website and do a little research and, and report back, so.
Well, right, while we're on, I mean, that, that specific item is not on the agenda, although it's been on the agenda in the past. I'm still hoping to meet with the, with the county about that issue, about how we would go about doing that, if we wanted to try to, to do some tax assessments. So that's definitely still an open question. Is there any other public comment on this issue, this agenda item?
There appears to be no further public comment.
Are there any questions or comments from the trustees? All right, then we will move on to 5.7, discussion of options for community-led maintenance of creeks and levees. Steve?
Okay. Yeah, just to continue this discussion, I did actually reach out to Herman Garcia, who's the president of Cheer, which is a coastal habitat, education, and environmental restoration group. Actually, gosh, it was probably, it was over a month ago. And he's, what they do is they partner with community volunteers to clean out the, essentially trash and loose debris from creeks, just so we're on the same page. They don't really clear out, you know, dead trees and, and things of that nature. But they definitely clean up trash, which they're, you know, when, when the creek dries out, I'm sure there'll be, there'll be some there. So we, the Pacheco Stormwater District should work with them to just come up with a date that we want to start reaching out to the community. You know, maybe that's late August, I don't know, when folks are still here and they're coming back from vacations. But they're willing, his group is willing to coordinate a cleanup for the creeks. He's very enthusiastic about it. That's, he's kind of devoted his life to creek cleanups at this point. So whenever, you know, the, the district and the county can help reach out to folks too, and have a, like a cleanup weekend. Basically what he does, he has, takes his team, they stage areas so that there's a clear path and debris can be put in piles and then either loaded onto his trucks by his folks, or if it's easy, loaded onto trucks by the volunteers. But he kind of stages the logistics and then they just take out all kinds of fun things from creeks. And yeah, so that's the status on that.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Would we, what would the next step be then to just to choose a date?
Yeah, choose a date. And if, I would suggest perhaps at our next meeting, next month, we have a couple of dates to consider, weekends, when the trustees think it might be a good time to, to clean up, to perform the cleanups. I can reach out to him ahead of time and see if there's quote, weekends available, because maybe we need to get into his queue as well. So I'll send him an email, get back to the office and ask him if there's a, a day or two available. And then I guess the question is, he'll ask what segments, because obviously Pacheco Creek is, there's a lot of segments. We'd obviously want to do it within, well, perhaps we would do the segments within the Pacheco Stormwater District, so downstream from San Felipe Road. And maybe in that regard, we could do it all in roughly a day or two, I think maybe a weekend from what I've seen. There's not a ton of trash from what I can tell, but there's some in that stretch, so. So I'll reach out to him for some available dates. I'll email the trustees and maybe we can have a discussion next, during our next meeting, what your recommendation is, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees?
I think so, the people, they're going to help us to clean the creek is the one they have to choose the day, because it's the one they're going to help us. I mean, we can say August 10, and maybe they're going to, they're not going to be available. So probably it's going to be better for them to choose what day so we can help it.
Well, right, yeah. Perhaps we could choose a range, you know, of dates.
Yeah, what I'll do, I'll, I'll email Herman and see, you know, which weekends are available. But yeah, we're going to have to work with him to pick some days that, so that they can be there. And like you're saying, when hopefully folks are available. So I'll provide some dates to the three trustees and then just give us guidance on, you know, probably try to publicize it, reach out to various groups and folks and things. And I think we all have some of our own contacts, so that I'll, you know, we'll reach out to folks once we pick the date. But yeah, whatever you three, you're going to have to give Herman some guidance too on which dates, because he needs to schedule his team there, you know, to prepare a little bit, basically, so.
Right now, my creek still has water and my well is artesianing like crazy. And I don't see anything drying up by next month. So if anything, might be a little bit more towards September.
Okay, good to know. Shoot for September.
Even, even late September. I mean, it doesn't really start raining really until November.
November.
I mean, once in, once in a while, we'll have some rain in October, but it really doesn't start until November.
Okay, sounds good. Late September, early October.
Yeah.
I agree, it's still, yes, there's still definitely some water out there, so.
I have a question for Sean. So do we need to vote on this, on inviting Cheer to do this cleanup?
You don't need to vote if there's a clear direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was actually just writing you an email too. We should set up, if we're going to go forward with that, we should set up some sort of agreement too. Some sort of volunteer agreement that sort of, you know, sets up the duties and the lack of liability.
Yes. And I, and of course, we have to also notify the property owners. I mean, we have these easements, but we still need to do that, I would imagine. Okay, well, we'll, we'll put it, it'll be on the agenda, I guess, for the next meeting. And yeah, maybe at that point, we'll have some potential dates in September or early Is there any public comment on this agenda item?
If you'd like to make a comment via Zoom, use a raise hand icon feature by dialing star nine. We have one public comment via Zoom. Rochelle, you've been unmuted.
In addition to the Cheer service, do you think that we would ever, as a district, want to consider, you know, renting goats to graze the organic matter that Cheer won't be able to get into? Because the organic matter, as we know, returns whether we'd like it or not. And so would that ever be an interest? Would that ever be an option with, with the county rules and so on and so forth?
Steve, would you like to respond?
So the good news is, I think the creek's pretty much all on, on private property. And I guess we can, I can reach out to our ag commissioner, I'm, and see his thoughts. And then since I'm talking to the permitting agencies, I'll ask them what the protocol would be, but I don't know the answer to that one. It's great, good suggestion. I don't know from a permitting standpoint if there is any necessary, but I'll, I'll ask and see, so.
Yeah, and I guess the only, the other question is, do we have any particular liability with goats? I mean, it's probably easier than having people, but I don't know.
I don't know. It's an interesting concept, so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other public comment?
Yes, Rochelle, Rochelle Beerly, I've been unmuted.
Okay, sorry, one last follow-up on the goat idea. I did look into it as a property owner, I think before or after the last flood that we had, to get rid of all that stuff growing on the property that was choking out everything else. And so I did get a price, and for my whole property of 38 acres, it was roughly $35,000 to raise goats. So our area that we're talking, the creek, much smaller, and I think if we look into this sooner than later, before stuff grows back and it becomes overgrown, we might be looking at, I don't know, five, 10,000 perhaps. Maybe that's way too much, but just a little number to, you know, kind of go on. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
There appears to be no further public comment.
All right, we will move on then to 5.8, update on publicity and outreach activities. I don't have any updates. Are there any updates from the trustees about publicity or outreach activities? Okay, is there any, I know that Rochelle put together that Nextdoor page for us, which is great. Do you have any comment and any updates, Rochelle?
I don't have anything on that. I was, it's been what, a month? I think we had a month lapse in between from the last meeting. Now, according to my memory, which, I don't know, did I not give you the handlings of that account to post to meetings? And if so, have we had any feedback or attendance level increases from that? And any suggestions on like, what kind of content to post following up the meeting? So that would all be, you know, helpful. We can make it as active or inactive as we choose, I guess. Thank you.
Yes. You're right, you did give me information about that. I did not post the meeting. I forgot about that. So I have not posted anything. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to hopefully be better about that in the future. Is there any public comment on this?
Yes, Rochelle, you have been unmuted.
On that topic, I mean, we could use it perhaps to conduct surveys. I mean, is it something that we would like to send out questionnaires or post questionnaires on the page, you know, regarding the tax on this, or regarding maintenance, or flooding, or how it affects the whole area? So we could use it more advantageous to us to provide, you know, public information for that, if they're not catching the meetings. So I guess what we need to discuss is, in the future, what kind of announcements do we want to put on the page?
Yes, I agree. It'd be nice to have a subcommittee, a public, an outreach subcommittee. So we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that in the future. Do the trustees have any comments or questions? No? Okay. Is there any other public comment?
There's, there appears to be no further public comment.
All right then. The final item, discussion of future agenda items. Are there any suggestions for future agenda items? Trustees have any, any suggestions? Is there any public comment?
Yes, Rochelle, you have been unmuted.
I think that we should talk about how we, what we should post on Nextdoor publicly. That would be one suggestion. And then the other one was, if we could follow up with, let's say, San Benito Water District to find out where their funding comes from and how it can apply to us for our future projects. And those are my two suggestions for now.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There appears to be no further public comment.
Okay, then I think we've reached the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A motion that we adjourn today's meeting?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right then, the meeting is adjourned. We will see you next month.